Meeting will come to order. Clerk Walter Brusevitz, would you call the roll, please?
Dave Abdallah?
Here.
Thomas Berry?
Here.
Robert Constand?
Here.
Lisa Hicks Clayton?
Here.
Margaret Horvath?
Here.
Joseph Kaczynski?
Here.
Ray Muscat?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Our new Economic Development Director, Joseph Hashem, will lead us in the pledge.
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilwoman Clayton?
I move to approve the Agenda Order of Business February 14th, 2017, regular meeting at Dearborn Heights City Council as presented, and this is an amended agenda.
Second.
With the addition of...
Yes, 8D and E. Thank you.
Second by Councilman Abdallah. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, item 4A, the minutes from the regular meeting of January 24th, 2017. Mr. Chairman? Councilman Kaczynski?
I move the minutes of the regular meeting held on January 24th, 2017 to be approved as submitted.
Support.
Support by Councilwoman Clayton. Any discussion? Okay. Do we need to address the amendment?
Or no?
To the old minutes?
The original, yeah, the original minutes.
Go ahead.
No, I'm just asking.
What amendment?
Well, where they added the police contract in the letter of understanding.
You noted that through the agenda.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion as stated, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, item number five, public hearing and comment on agenda items. If anybody has a brief comment on an item on the agenda, please come up to the podium, state the street you live on, and your comment.
It's on Agenda Item 11A. That is still on there, correct? The immigration vetting process? Okay.
Item 11A?
Yes. I would ask that this body not support nor adopt the resolution in 11A in regards to the immigration vetting process. This resolution addresses the executive order that is currently under temporary restraining order, so as of right now, this is a non-issue until the executive order is either further adjudicated, withdrawn, or reissued. The executive order in question was a temporary travel ban for 90 days and 120-day ban for refugees to review and strengthen our country's vetting process. This is a minor inconvenience when you consider that our service men and women are separated from their families for years at a time defending our country against terrorism. It is a sworn duty of the President of the United States of America to protect our country, and this is what the temporary ban was designed to do. I believe that this City Council of Dearborn Heights should focus their attention on the many other serious issues currently facing our city and let the immigration go to the proper branch of government. Thank you.
Well, your comment is not correct in that...
Mr. Chairman, point of order.
Anyone else? Mr. Chairman, I may have missed it, but they do have to give their name, and yeah, next time, please state your name and the street you live on.
Yeah, I think you're talking around.
I'll still do it next time, please.
John, go ahead, someone to say. Go ahead, someone to say.
No.
I understood that the 90-day period under which this part of the meeting is conducted is a comment by the citizens without any rebuttal.
Correct. It's correct. You're correct.
Okay.
I thought you were beginning a rebuttal.
Was that the end? Was that...
Not a rebuttal, just to point out the status of the ban, but I strike that remark.
Okay. Yeah, otherwise, we could be here debating every comment that a citizen makes. It's their privilege to come up and make a statement, and we should respect that.
You're right. You're right. All right, anyone else? Please state your name and the street you live on.
Good evening. Jan Battalow, Gully Road. I'm short. I'm here speaking on two agenda items, item 8D and 8E, and I did request additional time from the Chair, and appreciate that he granted that request, but I'm not going to be too long. So, first of all, 8D is the letter of understanding with the COAM. You had a list of items on there, and so I have three items, number nine, number 17, and number 18, that I have issue with. Number nine is requests for one chief and two deputy chiefs. However, it states that through attrition, the number will decline to one chief and one deputy chief. I don't understand why there's a necessity for two deputy chiefs when historically we've only even had one, and that hasn't been for a period of about six years or so. The deputy chief position was removed from the city's budget in '09-10 with submission by the mayor and support by the city council. The city has functioned since then without it. Number 17, the promotion of the two captains to deputy chiefs means that they, without any additional testing, will ascend to the position of chief according to seniority. I don't know how this is fair to current COAM or POAM employees or beneficial residents. Number 18, the current chief will stay an additional 18 months, the next deputy chief in line 24 months, and the last one 30 months past their respective drop dates, which was in 2010, extended from five years to seven years. Now, as a background for the drop, those that are aware of it, the drop program, and I was on the council at the time, and I fully supported it because it was sold to the council as a planning tool, because the police and fire departments, you know, they look at their hierarchy, they're trying to guess, you know, which way in their career they're going to go, and they certainly need to plan. Of course, the city wants to fill all those positions, you know, to support the public safety and the community. So I thought it was a great idea. I supported it. But unfortunately, it certainly hasn't worked in this particular department. There's been seven years to fill positions, and also training and education budgets, some years in excess of $60,000, to support, you know, tuition reimbursement or training to elevate lower-ranking officers to replace retiring officers. Now, the three persons in question on the letter of understanding, I'm sure have been aware of this for years, but it hasn't been a successful transition to elevating lower-ranking positions into the positions that are vacant. So, I think that, my thoughts are, that I think they're not adequately preparing the lower ranks, and I feel that this would reward a job not well done, and I think it's unfair to postpone for an additional 30 months the possible promotion of other police employees in the lower ranks. So, that's basically that. I can give you a spreadsheet that I did because I looked from 2007/08 budget all the way through the 14/15 budget to see how we've gone from one chief, one deputy chief, three captains, seven lieutenants, 16 sergeant, and 59 police officers, 16 dispatchers, you know, to a low, and that was 103 total to a low at one time of 90, which most of the reductions were in the lower ranks, which I think are the people that are servicing the residents more on a day-to-day basis. So, I hope that you will, the action that I'm requesting of you is to vote no on this. I do understand that there have been some questions as to ability to discipline people that are in the same union, but the deputy chief position would be in the union as well, so I'm not certain how that would alleviate that concern. And I do feel that we have people in our department that could maybe benefit from some additional training to help them through to their testing and then promote like they should. So, I also want to remind everybody that the headley override was passed by the voters, and that was sold to the voters as a measure to retain the current level of police and fire service, and if those at that town hall meeting definitely remember that it was overwhelmingly supported by, you know, the taxpayers and obviously passed, and that generates about an additional 1.8 million in that first year, and then, of course, rolls back accordingly. But to say that there isn't funding for it or hasn't been funding for it over the years, I feel is an incorrect statement. Public safety and, you know, trash removal are things that the city must provide, and I think that we could do better for that department. Now, so my suggestion is to enforce the current drop dates, and, oh, sorry. And if you have to go outside to hire somebody on a contractual basis to get, you know, the department going, you know, there's also waiving the two years of in their position in order to test. I know a lot of officers in fire and police have been hired from other departments, so, you know, they might have adequate skills already, and so that might be a barrier to them testing. So those are some of the suggestions. Item 8E, this is the COAM's proposed contract. I'm requesting that you refer this back to the administration for changes, updates, or something, and the particular articles, I have four. Article 11.1, which is page 18 in your contract, the automatic ascension of deputy chief to rank of chief without any additional testing. This, in combination with the LOU, will actually choose the next two police chiefs in succession. So if you don't realize that, then that's what it's going to be. I don't think it's fair to the other officers. I can't imagine that there aren't people that could fill these positions, or at least have the ability to test for them. So, the next one is Article 14.1, Section F1 and 2, which is page 24 of your contract. The responsibility of department heads. Like I said before, the old argument, and it's been said before many times regarding disciplining union members, whatever, this section actually deals with the duties of the department head, and it actually specifies that all these things in question are the duty of the department head, so there shouldn't really be an issue there. Article 16.1, Section D, which is page 26, this is in the wage section, but this is specifically the $2,000 signing bonus. I really object to people that are already employed in our city getting a signing bonus just for agreeing to a contract. I mean, I understand it's a negotiation, and everybody has to give something, and nobody's really happy at the end, but I don't understand what the benefit to the residents are, and, you know, we're the ones paying for it. Lastly, Article 25.9, Section B, which is page 55, drop participation period. Even though I supported the drop in the past, and I certainly continue to support it, I don't think I can support it for 84 months, and would like to recommend that it revert back to the original 60 months. The additional months didn't have the expected impact, so I don't think there's any real reason to continue. If you're, if anybody's interested in my spreadsheet, whatever, I'd be happy to provide it for you. Sorry, my printer wasn't agreeing with me this evening, or I would have brought it for you. Thank you very much for your time.
State your name and the street you live on, and just to comment on the agenda item itself at this point.
Zuhair Abdelha, 354 Rosemary, Dearborn Heights. I'm a little taller than Janet. I want to talk about the same items she talked about. I have been following the police department and what's going on for quite a while, but I never wanted to bring any subject in public to what's going on in the police department. We have been sued so many times because of personal relation by some police officers with some other people.
Mr. Abdallah, if you, but limited just at this point to the contract.
That's what I'm coming to. If you allow me to finish, you'll find out that this is what I'm talking about. There are thousands of dollars spent on lawsuits for personal reasons, which we're not responsible for. That person should have been paying out of his pocket for his personal problem, not us. That person is going to be given another extension to lead the force of the police department. Okay? I don't want to put on the internet what I have in my hand, in videos, and other tapes. I just want to ask our chief of police, please take your pension and leave, and I want to ask the administration, please be fair to us, resident. Do not, do not be unfair to the lower rank of the police because they deserve better. And if I couldn't, if they couldn't pass the test, it is the duty of the administration to go back to the table of negotiation and negotiate this contract and this agreement, really to be able to hire the right people for the right price to serve us the best service, not to be burden on us. I believe that the drop program was being abused tremendously, and it is time for it to stop. And I don't want to say anymore, but people understand, especially people on the city council, they know what I'm talking about, and I don't want to be forced to put things on the internet and show the public in this city what's going on. Thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing none. One more.
Good evening. I'm here for item number 8B.
Your name and the street you live on.
My name is Hassan Ahmad, 6845 Highview. I'm being nominated by Mayor Palatko for the Board of Review. I would like to introduce myself to the honorable city council members and to the attendees. Like I said, my name is Hassan Ahmad, and I've been a real estate broker here in Dearborn Heights for the past 14 years. Currently, I serve as one of the directors of Dearborn Board of Realtors. I'm happily married with two kids. I do hold a bachelor's degree in engineering, a master's degree in business, and I am hoping to get your approval to be able to serve the great residents of this great city and be able to give back.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Anyone else? Hearing none. The next item on the agenda, item five, public hearings, I'm sorry, item six, fund transfers and current claims.
Mr. Chair?
Councilman Berry?
Motion to approve current claim 6-1 through 6-27.
Second. Support? Support by Councilman Kaczynski. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Councilman Muscat?
I have a few items that I'd like to ask some questions about. I didn't get a chance to call anybody, so I apologize now, but I'm 6-9, and I guess this is going to go to Mr. Zimmer, and I believe all of them I have is from Mr. Zimmer, Aetna Supply Repair Parts and Supplies, and here it says auto parts, and these aren't auto parts, are they? They're really parts for, like, piping and... Actually, I just couldn't decipher that too well.
They do appear to be water parts, Councilman, but I'll have to look into it for you if you have questions.
And then the next one for you is 614, which is Mun Tractor Supply. I'd like to know what those were for. Again, it says auto parts, and it's throwing me off. I'm looking at these things, and they don't look like auto parts.
I believe, we do a lot of business with Mun Tractor for, like, backhoe parts and loader, some of the heavier equipment stuff.
Okay. I can accept that. And then the next one is 625. There's a section on 625 that says, "The engineering for meeting with MDOT to review plans for the left-turn option on Telegraph Road at Van Born," and that's coming out of the Water Department. And why would that come out of water if you're going to look at a left-hand turn lane? That shouldn't be coming out of water to look at something like that.
I'll have to look into that one also, Councilman. I didn't notice that was charged to the Water Department.
Yeah, because I really don't want to approve this, and then later on, it doesn't go bill to the proper place because, you know, every year we get somebody from, come in here and tell us we got to increase our water rates, and I see stuff like that, I start to shudder.
Let's also check the next item. It says, "MDOT load rating updates for Madison and Gully Bridges." I would think that would also be highway.
Yeah, I had that circled. It's going to be on there, too. That's $1,295, so.
Yeah. We'd ask that you approve it, but move those two items to highway.
Okay.
Mr. Chair? I just want to clarify. Bill?
Well, I...
Oh, you're done?
Well, how do we, you know, again, I'm going to ask for some assistance here. How do we go about approving this and then making sure these move to?
I amend the motion with the request to motion, item 625, the MDOT charges to highway rather than to water.
Yep. Is there support?
Support.
Any support? Okay. Anything else?
Yeah, I just had a question for Bill. Mr. Zimmer, just to clarify, because it does say on these in regards to Councilman Ray Muscat's question, it does say inventory dash auto parts, so I think it could be either or. Am I not mistaken?
Yeah, they will, oh, sorry.
Because it says on the account title, it says inv., which is inventory, and it says dash auto parts. So the point I'm making is it's not necessarily always auto parts. It could be also inventory.
Item claims 69.
69, any other ones they had mentioned?
Right. We also maintain a crib that has a decent amount of stock, so we don't have to run for parts every time we turn around.
No, no, but I was just trying to clarify. Councilman Ray's question, if it says inv., but I'm trying to make sure from you that that's, my thinking is correct. If it says inv., which is inventory dash auto parts, it could be either or. Is that not correct?
That is, that's correct.
That's what I thought. Yeah. Thank you.
Any other discussion on fund transfers and current claims? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item, item 7A, return of bid deposits, fire extinguishers from Chief Brogan.
Mr. Chair?
Councilman Muscat?
I move council approve Chief Brogan's request to return a bid deposit to Fine Line Products now that the order of smoke detectors, fire extinguishers, and carbon monoxide detectors has been received as outlined in 7A.
Support.
Support by Councilwoman Clayton. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion to return the bid deposits, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, item 8A, from Mayor Palatko, authorization to sign the lease agreement with Enterprise Fleet Management.
Mr. Chair?
Councilman Berry?
Move City Council concur and authorize the clerk to sign the agreement on behalf of the city with clarification as the attached as to how many copies will be required of this contract, where the contract should be sent to, and when is the effective date of the contract. If you'll note, on the contract itself, the mayor has already signed on behalf of the city, so I think we're just lacking the clerk's signature, if I'm not mistaken. Am I correct, Mr. Clerk?
Yeah, I haven't signed it yet.
Very well.
Second. Second by Councilman Kaczynski. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Councilman Muscat?
Just my thoughts here. This is something that's been long overdue. I'd like to see this go further where we have the vehicles, gas cards being brought forward in the future, and have all our vehicles, other than the police vehicles that are unmarked, be marked as the city of Dearborn Heights. It's long overdue that we mark all of those vehicles with the Dearborn Heights sticker.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of item 8A from Mayor Palatko, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, item 8B, also from Mayor Palatko, Board of Review vacancy replacement.
Mr. Chair?
Councilman Berry?
Move City Council concur with the appointment of Mr. Hassan Ahmed, who resigns on Highview in Dearborn Heights, to the Board of Review for the term to expire July 2017. I'd like to point out that the appointment is to fill the vacancy of Ron Krokmali, who is no longer with us. God bless him.
Support.
Second by Councilman Muscat. Any discussion? Just, Mr. Chair? Councilman Abdallah?
Just want to point out that I've known Mr. Ahmad for a while in my, in the business that I am in, and very upstanding realtor for a long time. He's been a real estate agent for about 15 years now, an associate broker with RE/MAX leading edge on Ford Road, been there since, I think, 2008 as a broker. Also, he's got, I've done some background on him a little bit, he's got a bachelor's degree in computer engineering from Oakland University, and a master's in business administration. So, I haven't served on that particular commission for a while, for a couple of years. I think he'd do a great job on the Board of Review, very capable, very knowledgeable on the real estate business, and very reputable in the real estate industry, so I support his nomination.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of item 8B, filling the vacancy of the Board of Review, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you for coming. The next item, item 8C, also from Mayor Palatko, reappointment to the General Government Civil Service Commission.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilwoman Clayton?
I move to concur with Mayor Daniel S. Palatko, the reappointment of James Kotlerak...
Kotlerak.
I'm sorry, of General Government Civil Service Commission. This is a three-year term expiring April of 2020, as outlined in 8C.
Second. Second by Councilman Kaczynski. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the reappointment to the General Government Civil Service Commission, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, item 8D, also from Mayor Palatko, letter of understanding with the Dearborn Heights Police Supervisors Association.
Chairman?
Councilwoman Horvath?
I move that the council approve the letter of understanding between the city of Dearborn Heights Police Supervisors Association, and authorize the mayor and the city clerk to sign the document on behalf of the city, as outlined in 8D.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kaczynski. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman? I think there's also a signature for Police Chief Gavin here. Maybe that should be authorized as well, on page three of three.
So does the maker of the motion want to?
Oh, I don't want him to sign it. Yeah, okay.
And the amendment is acceptable, Councilman Kaczynski?
Yes.
Any further discussion? Mr. Chair? Councilman Abdallah?
I just want to point out for the residents that in situations like this, we've had this presented to us originally probably about, I think, about two, three weeks ago or something like that, we have had a study session on this, we've had a couple of different discussions amongst the different council people, and then each and every one of us has done their own research, in addition to maybe talking to the chief and the captains and what have you. And of course, attorneys have done the original negotiations on this particular contract. So the reason I'm saying this, and that's no reflection as far as how everybody's going to vote on this, but I just want to point out that myself, when I used to sit in the audience, I used to think, how they just accept a contract just like that, without asking any question? they just accept a contract just like that without asking any questions. So I just wanted to point out to the residents that a lot of questions have been asked, a lot of things have been answered, and there has been a lot of background work on this, in addition to some residents that have done that and contacted us, uh, before we make our vote. So this is not something we're just jumping on and either okaying or denying. Just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Musket.
I, I'd like to salute, uh, Councilman Abdullah for what he just said. Uh, this is a very, any contract to me, for me to vote on is very tough. Um, we're talking about taxpayer money, and, uh, I did a lot of research on my own. I contacted five or six different cities, talked to various policemen from, uh, from chiefs down to patrolmen, and everybody's got an opinion. And, um, it's getting to the point where it's very, very difficult to hire policemen today. No one wants to be a policeman anymore. Uh, it used to be that they come in, be able to work twenty-five years, leave, get good benefits. Um, now they, everything's changing, uh, and, and it's getting, getting difficult to hire policemen. So I just wanna add that as I go along. Thank you.
Thank you, Man- Councilman Musket. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of item eight D, uh, the letter of understanding with the Dearborn Heights Police Supervisors Association, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
The ayes have it. Clerk, did you get that? It was... Next item on the agenda, item eight E, also from Mayor Pletko, agreement with the Dearborn Heights Police Supervisors Association.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Horvath.
I move that the council approve the agreement with the Dearborn Heights Police Officers, Police Supervisors Association as outlined in eight E.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kozinski. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of, uh, concurring with Mayor Pletko regarding the agreement with the, uh, Police Supervisors Association, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, reports from city officials from Treasurer O'Reilly, winter tax due date extension.
Chairman.
Councilwoman Horvath.
I move that we concur with Treasurer O'Reilly and extend the, uh, penalty due date to, uh, for the taxes to February fifteenth, two thousand seventeen, as outlined in nine A.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kozinski. Any discussion?
I mean, I'm just saying, just, I think it'd be a good idea to maybe either read that or clarify it to the residents because-
John.
Since, since that's who's gonna be the most affected.
Okay, Mr. Chairman.
You wanna do that, John, just in case?
That's a good idea.
Because I mean, we're approving this, but they have no idea why we're approving this.
Yeah.
Oh, it is.
The, the state law has the, um, February taxes due on the fourteenth, but the last couple of years, um, that fourteenth has been on a weekend, and so the, the due date has been on the fifteenth or sixteenth and thereafter. Um, and there's a lot of confusion because a lot of people think of the taxes, the income taxes due April fifteenth, our summer taxes due August fifteenth. And even though we've publicized that it's the fourteenth, there's, I always get a lot of people that say, oh, we thought it was the fifteenth. So I, I think just granting that one-day extension would be beneficial for the, the little bit of confusion that people have. Then what we will do is by the end of this week, we'll, uh, try to get everything in the system and mail out delinquent letters to those people, other people that, you know, we can get them in here to pay by the end of the, end of the month.
So, so we're waiving-
Just for one day.
Penalty for one day.
That's all.
So which means, which day do they have to come in on?
They'd have to be paid by tomorrow.
By tomorrow.
That's it.
And, and just to clarify, I hope it's not too late for a lot of residents, the penalty for paying a winter tax bill one day late is three percent.
And that's what's always been advertised.
Right, right. I realize that, but I'm just saying it's pretty substantial, so-
Yeah.
Hopefully to get it in on time.
Right.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, Treasurer O'Reilly. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, item nine B, from Police Chief Gavin, mobile radio purchase.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Clayton.
I move to, uh, concur with Police Chief Gavin and move the council purch, approve the purchase and payment for the two mobile radios. Cost with installation and a three-year service agreement is a total of eight thousand, six hundred, forty-eight dollars and seventy-four cents. Payment is upon receipt of the invoice for the purchase as outlined in nine B.
Support. Support by Councilman Musket. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of concurring with Police Chief Gavin regarding the mobile radio purchase, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, also from Police Chief Gavin, repairs to the HVAC rooftop units at the Justice Center.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Horvath.
I move that the council approve the, uh, system corporation contract to, uh, fix the rooftop units at the police department at the cost of thirty-five hundred and fifty dollars as outlined in nine C.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kozinski. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
So, this question is, I'm not sure if it's for the Police Chief or the Department Head, Bill Zimmer, who should answer this particular question, but just, um, out of curiosity thing. So in this particular case, it's a rooftop unit or multiple rooftop units, and that's, uh, and maybe I'm being presumptive here, but maybe possibly beyond your, it'd be beyond my expertise, that's for sure. So possibly beyond your expertise. So I'm just curious, in a situation like this where we have a fund to go out, which obviously needs to be repaired, but wouldn't it be a good idea, and I'm just, maybe you have already done this, to have Director Bill Zimmer involved on something like this? Or do you, are you the only one, or is he the one that makes this decision?
Yes, he, we make that decision, Dave. We, uh, we have sys, um, systems who's been in the building since it was built. So we've been relying on them. A lot of this stuff, yes, heating and cooling is out of my, uh-
Right.
-expertise there.
We've had that discussion, that's all. I didn't want to put you out, but I'm just wondering.
Yeah. So, we've been using them for years, and we rely on them. Um, we do the best we can. If, like we've said before, maybe one day down the line, if there is a, a building engineer in the city-
Building, I remember you mentioned that.
That could give everyone some advice, maybe that would help out.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Clayton.
Um, since these are existing units, and you're having them serviced, and there's a need to have them serviced, what is the age of the units, and is, was there ever a warranty? Is that extended or no?
I would have to check on the age of the units. Usually the warranty, we have a service contract with them, and if the units are warranted, they usually take care of that. So I'll go back and get an answer as to the age on these units. But we have various units on the roof, and over the course of years, I'm sure you probably see the, they come in quite regularly, the different units that are going down.
Are these the original ones? They're probably the original ones.
Yeah, they're probably the original, yeah.
Yeah, building's fourteen years.
If I could throw in just a couple more things, uh, as far as the chief's, what he's talking about.
Commissioner Zimmer, go ahead.
Um, a lot of the components are, that are under contract for service, uh, are not covered under contract, such as compressors and disposable items like that. And quite often, a compressor can go as high as fourteen thousand dollars for replacement. So to replace a whole rooftop unit for those prices is a good, good number.
Mr. Chair. Fourteen years is starting to stretch them out a little bit now for some of those, uh, uh, second-generation rooftops.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, item nine D, from Councilman Tom Berry, two thousand seventeen Community Block Grant Development Action Plan.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Berry.
I'm submitting this letter as a proposal to the two thousand seventeen Community Block Grant Development Action Plan. Uh, back on January twenty-fourth, uh, there was a presentation by CDBG including, which included the funding for public improvements, none of which included street lighting. So as you all know, our street lighting is old and inadequate, and as we have discussed in the city before, and we received proposals from, uh, from DTE, it was well over a million dollars to fund the project. Um, well, with this new CDB, two thousand seventeen CDBG proposal, I'd like to propose that a study be conducted in, um, estimating the cost of new street lighting in the low and moderate income areas of Dearborn Heights to offset the cost overall to the city. With that being said, I'd like to ask for the concurrence of council to have the administration conduct a study. And if I can add to that, I believe the, uh, administration already has conducted that study, so I guess we'd have to go with the concurrence first.
Second.
Uh, second by Councilman Musket. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chair.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, can, does this fall under CDBG? And the reason why I ask that is because a few weeks back, it was brought up that community development possibly could support purchasing some trash cans. Well, they can't. I did extensive research on it. I called the state, I called the county, I called the feds. They can't. It's a thing, and they can't support that. So would, can, can they support this? Do you know?
Well, uh, no, I can't give you a definitive answer. What, I met with Deborah Kane from DTE when Councilman Berry brought this up. Uh, I inquired, and I gave her the map that was handed out that night from CDBG. So she came out and priced that. Her feeling is, uh, so we'll work up a proposal, but whether or not it would qualify, that answer, that question has not been answered yet. Uh, the other thing that Deborah Kane, however, reported to us is DTE just got a rate increase, and they're going in for another one. And the rate increase is not across the board, but these mercury vapor lights that we have are, are getting like an extra boost in lieu of the LEDs. So she priced out and fills that on Telegraph, uh, Van Born, Ford Road particularly, that we should go to LED, and, um, they have offered to us that they'll extend seventy-six thousand dollars worth of credits for manpower in putting the lights up and some of the equipment. So we're analyzing that right now, but we'll probably recommend that we change some of the mercury vapors to LEDs because the payback is one point five years. So in the second year, we're gonna start to get some savings, and that's where the big dollars are. We did, uh, ask her, we gave her the map, and she did price out how many units were in each one of the areas and how much it would cost. So we have, uh, and we'll submit, but we're not sure exactly if it qualifies, but it may be something we might wanna do anyway, because the numbers came in very favorable, even in those CDBG areas that is a community we may wanna do.
Now, would that be the whole city? Are we looking at the whole?
No, that, that would be too much. Um, what, what Deborah Kane suggested was, uh, she felt like we would get the best, uh, bang for our dollar, if you will. And the other problem is, the mercury vapor, I don't think you can buy these anymore. And so she said that DTE will not be able to support them, and that's why they're willing to give us seventy-six thousand dollars to changing those lights and, uh, putting on the LED. Um, Bill was also in attendance at the meeting. Did I, is there anything else that I should highlight to them, or?
Uh, no, you, you've, you did a good job at, uh, explaining that, but the other ones were metal halide, and, uh, the wattage used by, um, some of the metal halide and mercury vapor lights was, was like four hundred watts as compared to the LEDs, which was, uh, significant, about a eighty percent savings in energy, so.
So we'll probably come back, uh, under that proposal, but will we fund these under CDBG? I'm not sure. Um, but it just makes economic sense to go with it, whether they, we do or not.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Berry.
Um, Mr. Mayor, will we be able to consider this for the two thousand seventeen, uh, CDBG proposal?
Yeah, it would be going in the seventeen, eighteen. Uh, and, and we would, we may recommend doing some of this in the current budget year, so the, uh, sixteen, seventeen budget because of the payback. Uh, we're watching, we'll probably talk to the treasurer because, uh, uh, there's a cash element involved with this. And so, uh, I like to bring him aboard as we go through on the cash, 'cause they want some upfront money, and it's not a little bit, but it would, after a year and a half, we're gonna start making, uh, getting a good payback on this.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Musket.
So we are going to look to see if CDBG can cover some of this, though.
We are. I, I, I talked to Mr. Hescham before the meeting, or, and earlier today, and so, um, what he's gonna look for is a proposal. So I, and I, I wanna thank Councilman Berry for bringing this up because it, it, uh, triggered, and then we found out all the savings we could get with DTE. So thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kozinski. Did I understand right that, uh, the, uh, DTE information did not segment the costs of the entire community, only specific areas?
Yeah, she could do, we would never be able to afford the whole community in the first year, and, uh, she really is pushing, and in fact, I could have her if you, uh, maybe that makes sense for committee of the whole meeting when we-
Good idea.
-put the proposal together. But she'll be better able to explain it. And, uh, yeah, I, I don't claim to be a electrical expert, but, uh, the point that Mr. Zimmer made was a key component as to why she came up with the ones. But I asked her in addition, after the Councilman brought it up at that public hearing, I gave her the map, and I said, could you price out for all the CDBG areas how much it would cost to do? So she did do that, which then becomes a way of some, making a submission to CDBG.
I, I ask that because, uh, part of the, the suggestion that the Council there is to, uh, to conduct a study. And, and part of that is already in place with regard to the expense in low and moderate income areas.
Yep.
So that, um, we can get an idea of how much that investment will save by virtue of reducing criminal activity and activities that require police response.
Sure.
So, uh, I thought it makes, it makes good sense to start in, in the, in the areas that he has designated, low and moderate income, and hopefully it can then spread out to other areas as, as, uh, funding and revenue is permitted.
Mr. Chair, one more.
Councilman Musket.
Didn't this, uh, representative from DT come in here a few years back at a study session, and you discussed the whole city at one time, and there was a cost at that time? Whatever happened to that?
Uh, the cost, there, there's, there's another element that's going on, and in fact, uh, Dearborn and some other communities have banded together because they feel, what they did is, they went and converted to LEDs. And then DTE, uh, raised the price of LEDs by a lot more than what they gave them in their proposal. So that generated a complaint before the Public Service, uh, Commission. If you re, I, you may not have been on the cops, but you might have been in the audience.
I was in the audience.
If you recall, uh, the two gentlemen that came to make the presentation, I had submit, they were nice enough, uh, in fact, one of the gentlemen I have known for some time, they took our proposal, and he said publicly, don't sign anything right now. And so we held off based upon their recommendation, not because they saw that the pricing was gonna change. The big thing that happened is now that, uh, DTE is charging more for the older lights and is now starting to reduce the LEDs. And that was the argument of this group. We're trying to be more energy efficient, and you, DTE, are taxing us by being efficient. And it's, it's like I had a request of some residents who didn't want wires across their driveway, and asked me to, um, look at solar power, which made a lot of sense for the, for their light. So Bill and I brought that up, and Deborah Kane said, you know, gentlemen, I'd love to accommodate you, but we don't make any money on solar lighting, so we're not gonna, we're not gonna put that in. You gotta be drawing some power, or we're not interested. So, um, the economic aspect of this thing also comes into play. But that's why we held off was specifically at the recommendation of those two, um, that board group as they were fighting the DTE. board group, as they were fighting the DTE proposal with the Public Service Commission.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion?
So, where does that issue stand? Because there was a request for conducting a study for expense. Should we put this to a, to a session? I don't want to wait for five years. We want to get this.
Well, I, I asked for concurrence to request the, the study, and the mayor's already begun the process, so all we need to do is agree with this, or concur with this, and he's already put that in motion.
Yeah, and your chairman set up a meeting, and, and we'll invite Deborah Kane.
Okay, we'll set that up. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of concurring with Councilman Tom Barry regarding the two thousand seventeen Community Block Grant Development Action Plan, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, from Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton, public comments on agenda items.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Move the City Council adopts the amendment to the Dearborn Heights City Council Policy and Procedure, implementing the procedure to allow for public comments and discussion prior to City Council vote on items which are presented on the agenda, approved agenda, as submitted in item, and this is nine E.
Support.
Second.
Second by Councilman Abdullah, any discussion? Can we just note that we did discuss this at a study session, and I have mentioned something already to the city attorney regarding making a change to our policies and procedures. Councilman Kozinski.
How does this relate to, to the present plan of hearing the citizens comment at, at the beginning of the meeting? What, does this, what influence does this have?
So this, this makes it permanent. We discussed it, and, and.
Yes, and you, you very well know that I was not here, so I'm trying to get some.
With this, just to clarify, so originally, we were gonna try this, if you recall, for ninety days.
Yes.
And we said we'd see how it would work out, and obviously, some were for, some were against. Now that we've tried it for ninety days, and ninety days are over, so now, in the study session, we were, we studied whether we should extend this for another ninety days or get it somewhat permanent. At this particular point, with the proposal from Councilwoman Hicks Clayton, Lisa Hicks Clayton, is that this becomes the regular way that we're gonna be conduct, conducting business. Keep in mind, though, if for whatever reason we change our minds, you can make another, I mean, somebody can make another proposal to take it up. At this particular point, we're gonna move forward permanently with this new system.
Very well summarized.
The time, the time of the inquiry or the statements will continue to be at the beginning of the meeting.
Correct. On the agenda item. Without comment or discussion.
But they, but they will, but to clarify, for the residents, just in case there's some confusion, on the agenda items, they could talk in the beginning of the meeting, but there's still public comments at the end of the meeting.
Right.
On the non-agenda items.
Okay.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Since I wasn't also at the, as I understand, that this would simply take the policy that currently exists and make it permanent. In other words, it would still be under item five, and there was something about without rebuttal. Is that also?
In other words, said, somebody can come up and say, I'm in favor of item ninety, or opposed, but no dis, no discussion going back and forth.
All right, without rebuttal, so that's also potentially a change.
Correct.
I have not looked at it. Okay, and I'll, I'll submit that and send it on out over to the clerk very soon.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, item nine E, public comments on agenda items, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda, from Recreation Director Ken Grebel, two thousand seventeen Spirit Festival Liquor License Application.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Horvath.
I move that the city approve the liquor license application for the beer and wine at the city's Spirit Fest, two thousand seventeen Spirit Fest. Resolve that the city of Dearborn Heights, through the signing of this application by the mayor and clerk, make application to the Liquor Control Commission for a special license for the sale of beer and wine for consumption on the grounds of the Canfield Community Center on Thursday, June the eighth, two thousand seventeen, ending no later than two AM on Sunday, June the eleventh, two thousand seventeen, as outlined in.
Nine F.
Nine.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kozinski, any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Just a quick follow-up to the cover sheet, through, for the city clerk, were all of your questions, your X boxes, were those answered for you? Including who the contract is sent to, how many contracts needed, the date, everything was provided accordingly?
I'm gonna defer that to the council's secretary.
Okay.
Um, not at this time.
Mr. Chair.
For follow-up, I think that should happen, for this to be processed.
Uh, Councilman Barry?
I just want to go on record, you'll know my vote as you get it every year, my vote will be no against this, but I, I personally am against the consumption of beer and wine and liquor at a Spirit Fest where there are children, where we are watching people getting their cars and driving away. I just think it's against, it is, I don't think, I know it's just against everything I stand for, and I don't, I do not condone drinking with, with children around and driving.
At a city event.
At a city event.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Musket.
I also feel the same way as Councilman Barry. It's against my principles, but I, I guess I can't vote because of my principles. I gotta vote on how it's gonna affect everything. And I had a conversation last year with our director, and he went over this with me with a fine-tooth comb. So I, I have to, I'll vote in that manner of what he told me and how, what he said, so I just want to make that also public.
Thank you, Councilman Musket. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Just to finish the thought process, and I respect the gentleman's opinion, both gentlemen, but again, the missing information that is needed to process this, is there anybody from Parks and Recreation can answer and make sure that information gets in so this can be handled expeditiously?
We're talking about.
Well, I understand, but I think, and I, you know, my vote is yes, but this, and this has been a reoccurring problem for our city clerk and for the office there, and we had a study session, we talked about this, a forum was presented, and there's still missing information to process this.
Gotcha.
Request. In all fairness, we need to be more efficient moving forward with city business, just, you know, a thought. And I'm.
What's missing?
He's got the Xs here, which is attached to your sheet.
I don't have it.
Okay, well, I'll let you look at mine.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
No.
So there were two noes.
Correct.
The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, from Public Service Director Bill Zimmer, vehicle hoist purchase.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Horvath.
I move that the council approves the JZR Enterprise LLC, provide and install one above-ground hoist for the low quote of four thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars, with payment and behind completion, and these funds for this project were allocated in the approved two thousand sixteen, seventeen Water Department budget. Support line in nine E.
Second.
Second by Councilman Abdullah, any discussion?
Chair.
Councilman Musket.
Uh, Director Zimmer, do we, with the purchase of this, is that coming with some sort of service agreement? So they come in for annual safety checks on this, or for the latches and everything of that nature?
No, we have a company that we currently use to do all of our hoists.
We do have a certified company, come in, certify. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of concurring with Public Service Director Zimmer regarding the vehicle hoist purchase, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, also from Public Service Administrator Zimmer, fuel pump replacement at BPW.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kozinski.
I move that the council approve the request of BPW Director Zimmer with regard to the need for the replacement of a fuel pump.
No, Mr. Chair. Correction?
Councilman Abdullah.
It's, this is just to advertise for bids, I just want to clarify that.
I'm sorry?
Correct.
It's to advertise for bids, it's not to replace it.
I stand corrected.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure, clarify that.
It does say advertise for bids, so.
Right.
Be thankful for good eyesight.
You're welcome.
Is there support?
I stand corrected.
Support.
It's, it's, it's the process of advertising for the fuel pump rather than the purchase.
Supported by Councilman Abdullah, any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Musket.
I'd like to know why water is paying for the whole thing. Shouldn't that be shared with all of the departments that use that gas pump? It seems to me, not only water is gonna be pumping gas, they're gonna be doing runs with that fuel to other parts of the city that does not relate it to a water issue.
Yeah, the, the, actually, the South End Fire Station also fuels up at that location. It is a water department asset, that, that whole building, all the, all the grounds are all water department assets. I think the comptroller office has a cost for other departments to use the facilities built into their charges.
Well, I'd like to see them before I, I approve this, because I'm, again, I keep seeing water, 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 and I never see this broken down. It tells me that this, this part is being paid here, and that part's being paid from there. I have a hard time with that.
If I might, Mr. Chairman, since this is a request for advertising bids, I would recommend that you allow that, and we'll come back and cover before we actually make the purchase for it, and we'll look at the allocation.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of concurring with Public Service Administrator Bill Zimmer regarding the advertisement for bids for fuel pump replacement, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, from Administrative Assistant Christine Laslow, revised purchase agreements for two three four one zero Hanover, two three four seven oh Hanover, and two three four four zero Hanover.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kozinski.
Move council approve the request of Administrative Assistant Christina Laslow to revise the purchase agreements of the indicated Hanover properties, two three four ten, four forty, and four seventy, as per the details of nine.
Aye.
Support.
Support by Councilman Barry, any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I had a question for Administrative Assistant Christina Laslow, if you don't mind. What are, I, I know this is for the revision, and I went through the contract, but what, what specifically are the revisions?
They'll be typed out in the future, I only had a PDF, so I had to use my lovely handwriting for these, but on, on, I since got a Word document. It's written out like a check, instead of just having one hundred and thirty-two, the numerical amounts for the agreement. The, um, second part is on number three, number nine, I'm sorry, page number three, item number nine, there's a water escrow amount. We held water escrow for a couple of the, um, closing, when there was a closing, if they didn't get a final water bill yet, we did a water escrow. Our attorney said there should probably be a water escrow in, um, this document. Item number.
Just out of curiosity.
Uh-huh.
So was there any particular cases, not necessarily on this particular property, but any other property where, just as a possibility, some of the residents did not, based on the fact that they knew they were moving out, stopped paying the water bill, do you automatically increase the water escrow amount in the event? There's an unpaid bill?
No, we have a, we have a final bill.
Okay.
And that's what the title company looks at, and if there's an unpaid portion that they don't pay.
You're charging it at closing?
Yeah, that comes back.
Okay, thank you.
And this is just for if they, if they didn't get a final bill yet. There was a couple of properties where residents needed to close, like yesterday, and to get through the process, we couldn't get a final water bill before closing. Um, that's on the same page, the item number eleven, deed restrictions. We do have a deed restriction document for FEMA, but, um, the attorney in the title company said they'd like it to put it in the actual purchase agreement as well. Um, item number thirteen, on the same page, damage escrow. We have in here that the property should be broom-ready, and all the other residents had honored that, there was a problem with one resident. And you can say, well, you're tearing it down, what's the big deal? Well, the big deal is, a company's coming in to demolish it, another company's in, coming before to, um, do, um, environmental testing, and then environmental abatement, and if they have to move that content, if it's a couple cans of paint, that's something, but if it's, um.
Furniture latte?
Furniture, well, in this case, it was trash, it was compost, it was, um, moldy milk and other things in the house that we ended up occurring a big cost for. So that is a different escrow, that escrow can be released that same day, if we close in the morning, or the next day, if we close in the afternoon, when we go through and we clear it, just to make sure it's not gonna cost any extra to clean it up. The last, um, the last one is the, um, attorney review on page four, item number twenty. Um, the seller has always had the ability to get an attorney, this just puts it in writing, so. This is the third revision they've done. It's just, I think they're gonna do more before we're done, and unfortunately, um, well, the Willis household just went on December, but the other two homes hadn't signed yet, so that's why I decided to revise all unsigned.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Treasurer Riley?
Will we, will this be the final cost, or will there be a closing cost on top?
They'll still have closing, but I haven't scheduled a closing, none of these people have signed anything.
Will we come back?
Yeah.
Okay, 'cause I was just worried about the funds.
Like I did with the other ones, where I did a separate thing for closing.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? My questions were answered. Thank you, Councilman Abdullah and Christine Laslow. Anything, Councilman Barry, could you?
No, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Hearing none. All those in favor of concurring with Administrative Assistant Laslow regarding the revised purchase agreements, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, item eleven A, from Councilman David Abdullah and Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton, resolution to support the efficacy of the current immigration vetting process. Go ahead. Yeah. Councilman Abdullah.
Sure.
So at this time, I'd like to, myself and Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton, we'd like to respectfully request your consideration and support to adopt a resolution by the Dearborn Heights City Council to support the efficacy of the current immigration vetting process. In recognition of the president's explicit acknowledgement that local jurisdictions should have a, a role in settlement of refugees, Governor Snyder's acknowledgement that immigrants contribute to a strong talent-based and diverse culture in the state, and the city of Dearborn Heights' commitment to being a welcoming city, the Dearborn Heights City Council adds its voice to the chorus of pleas to the president, to President Trump, to repeal this injurious executive order with respect to immigration, recognize the efficacy of the current immigration vetting process, and allow the flow of legal, legal immigrants and refugees to proceed to the local jurisdictions that welcome them. In closing, we appreciate your consideration and support. Respectfully submitted, Dave Abdullah and Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton.
Support.
Well said. By Councilwoman Hicks Clayton, any discussion?
Well said, thank you for that resolution, appreciate it.
And just so everybody knows, the status of the exec, so the president issued the executive order, and one of the problems was, there were. and one of the problems was there were people mid-flight coming back from, let's say, Iraq or somewhere, and there was a lot of confusion. A lawsuit was filed, and the executive order was stayed. And that was taken up on appeal to the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals, the court below the U.S. Supreme Court, and they unanimously affirmed the stay. So that's the status. There's amongst other things some problems in the way the executive order came out, making it religious-based, which is against the Constitution and so forth.
Counsel.
Counselor Miatki?
Yeah, I would just also recommend if the council adopts this motion that it also include in the motion that the city clerk be directed to send copies of this resolution as stated in the last paragraph of the resolution as well.
Does the maker and supporter.
Support.
Okay with that amendment? Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of item 11A from Councilman Abdullah and Councilwoman Hicks Clayton, a resolution to support the efficacy of the current immigration vetting process, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
That was five yeses and two noes. Clerk, get that.
If we do this.
No, I'm just.
Oh, okay.
Want to make sure the clerk got the.
Who were the noes, please?
Councilwoman Horvath and Councilman Kozinski. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, I know what the flutter is going to be tomorrow, and I really don't give a care. But if we make this a sanctuary city, which is what this sounds like, it doesn't say it, but it sounds like it, I fear that we will be, I can't say the word.
Penalized?
Penalized financially if the President decides to do that. What is our financial loss going to be? That's my concern. I feel that all of the Arab community in our area and in Dearborn, yes, there are problems, but there's problems in every ethnic group. And I think that we're fair, and we treat them well. They treat us well. And I don't see this as necessary until we know for sure that we will not be penalized by the President for doing this.
Okay. Mr. Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
Just for clarification purposes, this particular resolution here, all it basically says is where we stand with this thing, but this is not.
Sanctuary city.
Anything. It has nothing in there about a sanctuary city, which I do, you know, I'm pretty familiar with that particular process.
But they won't look at that and.
I mean, anybody can look at it any way they want to, but what I'm saying is this is not a resolution to make the city a sanctuary city, just, you know, for clarification purposes.
I get that. I still vote no.
And I, for myself, speaking on behalf of myself, I'm definitely all for vetting. I'm all for making sure no type of terrorist or anybody gets into this country that is going to do anything in any way, shape, or form to harm the residents of this great country or this great country in general. This is just against any type of proposal that goes totally against what our Constitution stands for, what our flag stands for, and what I came to this country and why I'm staying in this country for is the fact that there will be no discrimination against anybody or any type of religion or country for that matter. Because you cannot, in my opinion, state a whole country cannot come here or a whole religion cannot come here, which stands totally against what our founding fathers stood for. Thank you.
Well said, Mr. Abdullah. Thank you very much. I'd like to thank our forefathers for allowing our people to immigrate into this country. I think that we have made a positive contribution, both my Polish side and my Arabic side have made positive contributions to this country. And I don't think that the current, I don't think that the current administration.
The federal.
The federal, the federal, the president, the so-called president, the federal administration. The federal administration.
This is the council's.
Knows. Has researched this well enough. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Clayton.
You know, and I'm hearing the political, but this isn't about political parties. It's about people. And we need to recognize, and it clearly states it in the resolution, it's about dignity of all residents and their valuable contributions to social, religious, cultural, and economic life within our city. Even Governor Snyder, and it clearly states here that Governor Snyder believes that legal immigration has helped build a strong and diverse talent base and culture in Michigan, which we desperately need right now to bring back the talent to Michigan. And it clearly states the positive, and I respect all votes and opinions, but I just wanted to say it's clearly outlined to be supportive of the diversity and embracing diversity. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I just want to also point out.
Abdullah.
I just want to also point out, this is a very similar resolution to a lot of other surrounding communities and cities in the area. And again, and I'm just speaking for myself, I'm all for the vetting, no doubt about it. There's no, that's clear. I'm all for the vetting and making sure that good people come into this country. But even if you look at this table here as we stand as a council, without naming specific people, you've got probably four or five people that have come either themselves or maybe their families from immigrant countries. And thank the Lord, they've done well for themselves and are supportive of this great country. And as you can see, obviously, participating in this great country. And this is the reason why I support something like this. Thank you.
Thank you. Well put. Well put.
We didn't vote, I don't think.
Yes, we did.
I voted in a manner that I did because in this country, we have other protective mechanisms for the privilege of vetting. And in view of the fact that this is an unfinished symphony, so to say, where the justices of the highest court or near the highest court have made a decision to stay the order of the President, that puts that situation in limbo. This may not be addressed finally, in its final phase, perhaps for months and maybe for years. The timeliness of this is a little premature, and it's one of the reasons why I felt that, in addition to those I cited, anybody has the privilege to come to this country even if they don't rely on the vetting process. Our Constitution allows that for that to occur to anyone who wants to come. There is, in the executive order, I thought there was a tinge of discrimination in the President's attitude of what he did to the seven countries being sounded out as countries that should not be permitted to come in. At least, that was the impression I have. He didn't dwell too much on the legal person or the illegal person. So with that kind of rationale on the back of my mind, I chose at this point to decide against the resolution because the resolution in a sense is one that is put up at a time when there's still case pending with regard to the final conclusion of this issue. We do that on the locals scene. If we have anyone involved in a lawsuit in the community or a community having, a person having a lawsuit against us, we don't discuss that or put it into resolution form to bring it out into the open. It's all kept under wraps until the final decision and the final process is taken by the legal community to come to a final decision on the issue. And that's essentially, those are some of the thoughts that went into my decision on voting against the issue.
Anyone else? Hearing none. The next item on the agenda, item 13A, permanent traffic control device for eastbound Annapolis traffic at Vassar.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Horvath.
I move that the council approve the no-have turn sign eastbound Annapolis at Vassar as outlined in 13A.
Support.
Support by Councilman Musket. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Musket.
A quick question, I guess, to our, would be our police chief or captains or whatever. A few weeks ago, I asked traffic to look at a situation on Mayburn at the dead end there in the 6200 block where they've got a clinic that just opened up there on Telegraph, and everybody is parking on the street instead of in their parking lot. And the people, you know, Mayburn's a pretty narrow street as it is right now. And even on trash pickup days, people are just coming in and parking there. And these people, I mean, I literally went there. You cannot maneuver down that street. Do you know if they've looked at that yet?
Do you know who, did you talk with Sergeant Zapko with the traffic or?
I think I left a message for him, but I haven't heard back from anybody.
He was here earlier. I'll check tomorrow and see. So it's the patients from the doctor on Telegraph are parking on the side street. And that's a dead end there, just.
Right, right. And the people are having one heck of a time backing out of their driveway. Mayburn is a narrow street as it is already. And then, like I said, even on trash pickup, I've gone there and cars are just, people get up, park there, and they just walk across, jump over the fence, and go to the doctor's office.
We'll take a look at that.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the permanent traffic control device at Annapolis and Vassar, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, item 13B, application for solicitation license at the Carl Stitt Post.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the application for solicitation license submitted on behalf of the American Legion Auxiliary Carl E. Stitt Post, Unit 232. The date of this is May 6, 2017. Location is Warren and Telegraph as outlined in 13B.
Second. Second by Councilman Kozinski. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion as stated, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, item 13C, business license renewal for Mogul Inc. on Beach Daily.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kozinski.
I move counsel authorize the renewal application indicated in 13A for Mogul Inc.
Mogul.
I'm sorry.
Mogul.
Mogul Inc. as indicated in 13A.
13C.
Those 13C.
13C.
Is there support?
Support.
Support by Councilman Abdullah. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion as stated, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. That ends the business portion of our meeting. Is there any announcements from anybody at the table?
Just Chairman.
Councilwoman Horvath.
I would like to ask permission from the council to get an opinion from our corporation counsel regarding the violations of the Closed Meetings Act. In the past probably 18 months, we've had, in my opinion, three violations of the Open Meetings Act, closed sessions specifically. And I would ask that we get an opinion from our corporation counsel. I will provide him with the three that I know of and ask him to come back with an opinion on it. Is that a correct way to do it? Or do you want it in writing?
Well, I think that as long as the council, the council chair ends up indicating that you can provide me with the information and I can do research.
I will tell you this.
And then I will provide a written opinion to the council, which would be subject to attorney-client privilege, and deliver that opinion to the council thereafter.
I will tell you this. I did contact a lawyer. Wasn't my brother. It was an attorney down river who specializes in this kind of, and he told me that I had to go through Gary. And then Gary kind of didn't hedge, but he kind of questioned that. So then I called the state, and I made a number of calls up there going through when this evolved, the open meetings and all that. And they basically told me the same thing. It has to start with corporation counsel. So I'm requesting that we allow him to do that.
Which, and then, yeah, so then you'll do a letter or an email to.
Whatever he needs from me, I will give it to him.
But we'd like to hear what.
Yeah, I was going to say.
I will. I'll send everybody an email.
Correct what the problems are.
Yes.
Councilman Barry.
In regards to that, Marge, is, what actions can be taken? Did they share with you that there are actions that can be taken?
Um, not really. That's.
If I may suggest.
Yeah.
Okay. First of all, I'd suggest that if you're going to send an email, that the email be directed to me so that it's subject to attorney-client privilege and then copied to the members of the council. The second thing that I would suggest is that anything having to do with potential remedies or issues with regard to that would be addressed in my opinion.
Fair enough.
So that we don't end up having an issue. I'm not saying that there were violations, at least that I'm aware of. I'm just saying that if there is some issue, then that should be something that is raised to the council and to the administration, subject to attorney-client privilege.
Mr. Chair. Councilman Abdullah.
So just an idea, before, and this is with due respect, counsel, before we start paying an attorney to do research on this, and just thinking out loud here, what if Councilwoman Marge Horvath initially lets us all know what this quote-unquote, you know, whatever it is that we either did wrong or not following the typical instructions or what have you on this? And maybe we're in agreement with her that, okay, this is wrong, and we'll just get it corrected. So therefore, no need to pay our council to research it if we're all in agreement. If we are in disagreement, then it would have to be researched to get an official legal answer. Just throwing it out there.
Here's the difficulty with that. If that's indeed the case, then any communications between you would not be subject to attorney-client privilege and would end up basically being something where someone could potentially end up suing the city or individual council members with respect to the alleged violations of the Open Meetings Act. So I would advise against doing something along those lines because even though it would appear that it might end up saving money, it might also end up causing there to be exposure to the city.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kozinski.
The, it takes me back and should take you back to a very recent session that we had in September with regard to getting some background as to what Robert's Rules of Order are and where there are potential violations of the Open Meetings Act. In spite of that session, I can call out, and I'm not, I don't subscribe to a lot of the emails that come over the computer to any great depth, but there have been, within the last month, three or four separate emails that skirt the violations of the Open Meetings Act. And that has to do with publishing over the internet information that was shared with us in a closed session. That clearly, for me, is a violation of the Open Meetings Act. And in spite of going through the expense and taking the time and energy of hearing the experts talk about this in September, we have this conclusion. I didn't happen to find these things by myself. Somebody called me and asked me questions with regard to what they saw on the internet. And I subsequently looked at my email, and the questions were appropriate. What about such and such? Well, I couldn't answer that because that was a subject of a closed session. I didn't want to put myself into a situation of discussing something that would certainly impact on the violation of the Open Meetings Act. So in the sense, I'm trying to say, don't be too quick to manipulate the keyboard to be the first one on the street to say something about something that we shouldn't be saying anything about. Think about it a little bit before you take that step because if you don't. Think about it a little bit before you take that step, because if you don't think through this, we're going to be up to here in additional legal problems. So, think hard and strong as to what the September session had shown us. Think hard and strong that what was said by Councilwoman Horvath, she's already taken steps with consulting with a legal person beyond that of our immediate counselor, and the fact that I have been exposed to some questions with regard to an issue that should have not appeared, in my opinion, on the emails. So, let's take it from there, and work toward a goal that we don't want to put ourselves into a situation of being on the wrong side of the fence.
Anyone else, any other announcements?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr.
Well, we don't have an action. Are we going to let him do this?
Yes, you and I discussed it before today, and I said yes.
Okay, so I should go ahead. All right, there you go.
All right, Mr.
You'll, you'll.
I'll follow up with Gary.
And, but let us know what?
Yeah, yes.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kozinski.
We're not to hear through the email system with regard to what her suggestion is or her findings. That has to come from Councilman Yatki.
Right.
That's the understanding we all have. Because once again, I don't want to be a party to a bad judgment or a bad decision.
Okay, got it.
Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Councilwoman Clayton.
Um, thank you. I just want to take a moment to thank Bedford Elementary School, Party Elementary School, and Dearborn Heights Girl Scout Troop, four-one-two-three-nine, that participated in the Valentine's for Veterans Project. It was a community service project we did, and we sent close to three hundred Valentine's cards, were hand-delivered today, to the VA Hospital in Ann Arbor. So we want to thank all of the students and the teachers and parents for the support for the Valentine's for Veterans Project. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, and happy Valentine's Day to everyone. Any other announcements? Mayor, Mayor Pilekko?
Got some good news, and, but, we all need to help out on this, and, but, we received a communication from the Department of the Army Detroit District Corps of Engineers. And I'll just read the first paragraph. Interested parties are hereby notified that the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers Detroit District is seeking public comment on the draft North Branch Ecorus Creek Flood Risk Management General Revaluation Report and Environmental Assessment in Wayne County, Michigan. This notice also serves to solicit comments on cultural resource and tribal concerns under the National Historic Preservation Act. Why this is particularly important, this is the closest we have ever gotten to getting the Ecorus Creek Flood Abatement Program approved. This is monumental. But in the next thirty days, they're going to be asking for comments. This has got to be like the Goodfellas, folks. All of us as residents need to send a letter telling the Army Corps of Engineers that we, as Dearborn Heights residents, are supportive of the project. I will have on the next agenda a resolution that I would hope the council would approve. We will be doing, I've talked to Mr. Ann Crapp, we'll be doing some PR items, and we'll have the address. The address is the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers Detroit District Attention Plan Formulation Office, four-seven-seven Michigan Avenue, Detroit, Michigan, four-eight-two-two-six-dash-two-five-five-zero, and we will get this information out. We will also put on the website the information that was given. But this is very, very significant, and we need positive comment on. This communication is going to all of the communities that are in the district, and we certainly, hopefully, don't get any negative comments from other communities, but it's important that we go on record. The last, this is the, the next step from here, given the public comment is favorable, is the Army Corps of Engineers will send this on to the president for funding. I'm not aware of us ever getting a project dealing with Ecorus Creek anywhere near this far. This is just fantastically good news, but it's important. I know that in past years, people have said, tell us when we need to do something, this is the time. So please respond, give them a favorable, take a look at the project, but this is just a great news for Dearborn Heights, and I'm happy to share it. We got the communication yesterday, so it's fresh off. The thing, we have thirty days to communicate. It said as of the date of the letter, which is February thirteenth, so I would assume somewhere around April fourteenth or something. There's twenty days, probably April fifteenth. And get your letters and comments in, supportive of the Ecorus Creek project. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
On that note, Mr. Mayor, is there a way that we could have a generic letter printed up, and people can just attach their names to it? That would make it a lot easier for a lot of people who don't write letters or whatnot. We can print them out and have them, like my mom doesn't?
Yeah.
Just have them sign their name to it, and?
We'll do it.
Go that way.
We'll do it. Good idea.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kozinski.
The, you must have looked in my notes, Councilman Musket, a generic letter would be appropriate. Some of our citizens are a little bashful about putting their pieces together in written form, so that that will be very helpful. In addition to that, is there a possibility that a petition signed by a number of citizens would be beneficial?
Sure.
If that is, then we need to know that also.
Or, Mr. Chair? Or maybe, Mr. Mayor, is there on the website, maybe, a spot for residents to be able to go and put in their comments?
I have, I have not gone.
Not our website, I'm talking about the Army Corps.
Yeah, it's, it says comments, USACE-Detroit@USACE.ARMY.MIL. We're going to put this information, no, I have.
But I'm saying, if there's a link, maybe add it on our website, on our city website.
As soon as that site's up, we'll put it up. We're in touch with Paul Powell from the Army Corps of Engineer to get that site up, because that site's not, it's a wrong link or there's something.
I'm just saying it'd be the fastest and quickest.
She's saying, yes.
All right. Right, good.
Thank you, thank you. Any other announcements from anybody at the table? We have our state representative, Jewel Jones, here tonight for the first time. If you want to get up and introduce yourself and make any comments.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor, council, city administration, citizens. I'm Jewel Jones. I'm the newly-elected state representative for the eleventh district, so that's covering all of Inkster, all of Garden City. I have about half of Dearborn Heights, a small portion of Levonian, a small portion of Westland. And I just wanted to make sure that I, I got a chance to come to the meetings. I'll be here more often now. Nothing, not a whole lot is going on in Lansing right now, we just got committee assignments, so we're about to start diving into the work. But I guess just a little bit of background about myself, I'm a senior at the University of Michigan Dearborn right now, studying political science and business studies. I'm in Army ROTC program, member of the National Guard, and I served on Inkster City Council for about a year and a month before I moved to this new position. So I'm looking forward to working with the city council, the mayor, the administration, I believe. I met with, I think he was the first contact I had here in Dearborn Heights early last year. The clerk, so I'm just looking forward to serving you all, and however I can be of assistance, feel free to reach out. My number's on the card that just got passed around, and I'll be sticking around for a little while to meet any citizens that have any questions as well, so.
Congratulations on a great one.
Thank you.
I'll ask you to send a letter supporting the Ecorus Creek Flood Abatement Program.
Certainly. I'll see if some of my colleagues can send a letter as well.
Please.
And happy Valentine's Day, everyone.
Thank you.
Any other announcements? Anyone else with any announcements? There's no announcements. If anybody has any comments or questions, please try to limit your comments or questions to three minutes. Come up to the podium, state your name and the street you live on.
Sue, Parker Street, my husband Rich.
Rich, Parker Street.
Parker Street. At last city council meeting, Chairman Kozinski, Constant, asked us to send emails regarding our questions, because this is not the form to get our questions answered, and it's been three weeks, and we have not received any answers to our questions. So what is our next step?
So, we had the city attorney, the city engineer, the ordinance director, others, go out, look at your property, and make a proposal.
Councilor Chair, if I may.
And then, the problem was, you didn't answer back, which your response was to the proposal. City Attorney, go ahead.
Yes, we had a meeting scheduled in the, with the administration for February the first. That meeting had to end up being rescheduled. That meeting will be taking place on February the twenty-third. At your, I believe, next meeting thereafter, you and I have discussed there being a closed session. I will present an opinion that will suggest what the course of action should be as taken by the council. Whether or not it addresses their questions is not the scope or the focus of the letter. It will be an opinion letter to the council with respect to this matter, similar to the email that I sent, which was quite extensive with regard to this issue before, that was a subject of a closed session. So that is where we are right now, and we will be meeting, and then I will be preparing a follow-up communication to the other communication. And then at that point, we will have perhaps some notion of how this honorable body wants to address this issue, and perhaps have information, and perhaps not have information, that will satisfy Mr. and Mrs. Sefaldi with respect to their questions.
Mr. Chair. Councilman Abdullah.
So I just had a question. I know one of the things that I brought up last time was, one of the proposals was from Wade Trim, was to put in a French drain at the time.
On our property, correct.
On your property. And I know you had hesitations on you paying for it, and I, and, I mean, I get the thought process.
And it being on our property.
But at the time, if you recall, one of the things that I suggested or thought, I mean, that's the first thing we would do to resolve any problem, is get some sort of an estimate. And I know you were going to get an estimate, at the time, at least, from the best of my recollection, you were going to get an estimate. Was that done?
And you guys were going to get estimates, too. It was on both parties. We had called people, yeah, you were going to get three estimates, and we were going to call people to get estimates. Have you guys done that?
We're not going to negotiate begging for it.
No, no, I'm just asking on your.
We're not negotiating, that was what was said.
Okay, but I'm just trying to clarify here. It's not going against you or for you. I'm just trying to clarify.
I'm just saying what was said.
Because there's been all kinds of numbers thrown around as far as how much this would cost to fix.
Correct.
And I heard numbers of three hundred, and I heard, I recall, something like two, three thousand, or whatever it is. So have you, on your end?
We have no idea, we have not, we've called multiple companies, they said until the weather breaks in the spring, they cannot come out and give us an estimate. That's what was told. What we feel, it should not be on our property either. If, and actually, the city shouldn't be paying for this. They're, in our opinion, they are in violation of ordinances that we haven't got answers on. Their permit is fraudulent in nature, that wasn't addressed, and has been pushed to the side, and he should be paying it. The city shouldn't be paying for any of this. He should be written up for a violation, and he should pay for it on his own. The city and the citizens of this city should not have to pay for this. The violator should be paying for it.
I know, but just so that there's no guesswork, at least, you said you can't, there's no way, there's no company out there that could give you at least a dollar figure?
Nope.
Mr.
Have to come out and look at it.
Just for Mr., I've looked at it, as you recall.
Well.
For Mr., no, I did, I mean, your.
Yeah, to give us an estimate, they have to come out and look at it.
You don't want to, okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So when are our questions going to be answered, is my question?
If we didn't install your cement next door, your neighbor did. It's somebody out there to look at it, there was a proposal, and so you'll have to deal with the administration and the city attorney regarding that proposal.
So no one is going to answer our questions?
Do we understand your position?
We replied to his proposal.
Why was the permit issued and so forth?
We replied to his proposal within the timeframe, and you also stated that we needed to put this in writing and send it to the appropriate people, and they would answer our questions. And no one has responded to it.
Councilman Yatki, you want to again explain what the process is going to be?
No one has indicated that their questions would be answered. They have indicated that they want their questions answered, but the process will be, will be determined more after we end up having an opportunity to discuss this with the administration, and discuss this with the council in a closed session. In terms of what they want under the circumstances, that will be something that will be discussed in a closed session, and will be discussed with the administration, and will also be discussed with the communication that I also received from their, their neighbor after the one meeting where he was very upset. So, that is the best, I think, that I can say in terms of what the process should be at this point.
Mr. Chair.
I mean, just to be fair, we, it was stated to them, what are your questions? Send them to us in writing.
Thank you.
I did not personally, I did not personally.
Thank you.
Answer, just because I didn't feel it's on me as one councilperson to give an opinion for the body as a whole, and I understand the closed sessions and all that, but just to be fair, I mean, that was what they were asked to do, is put your questions in writing, and they did.
Right.
The resolution of the issue, and the city, everybody went out, they looked, they came up with a resolution. We understand your questions, but they're not something that the council can answer.
Right.
Why was the permit issued? Why hasn't he been cited? Blah, blah, blah. That's, that's not, so the next step will be that you'll be hearing back from the city attorney. He's going to meet with us and inform us. So our meeting, Mr. Chair, will be on the twenty-third with the corporate council?
No, it will be, our meeting on the twenty-third is with members of the administration, that's on a Thursday, and that will end up basically being a meeting with the mayor, with Mr. Sobo, Mr. McIntyre, Mr. Brooks, I believe.
And then when will we be notified?
Your meeting thereafter.
And, and there was a proposal, and when you came the last time, you said, no, we didn't respond to the proposal, so you, then you started rejecting.
No, we did respond.
You did respond to it, and within the timeframe that was asked.
So, so we don't, that goes through the administration, through ordinance, through, through building, and through the city attorney.
So the ordinance department, the building department cannot answer our questions, even though we directed them to them?
No, it goes through the administration and through the city attorney.
Right, but like I said, and like.
So you're saying anybody who has a question about building has to go through the city attorney first?
No, that's not what I said.
The building department can't answer a simple question as what a remove-and-replace permit is?
We, we, we understand your position.
It's a simple question.
We understand your.
Or why were, why were we denied? Why were we denied a permit?
Yeah.
To do the exact same thing he did without a written consent.
If someone says remove-and-replace eight-by-eight shed, can they, can they put up a shed bigger than that?
Yep, this way. Yep.
We're doing the microphone.
I mean, someone said they're going to remove and replace a twenty-by-twenty shed when they had an eight-by-eight shed.
We understand your argument, you've been here, we understand that.
It's a simple question.
It comes down to a legal matter, and we can't legally, we can't give a legal opinion.
Right, right.
No, we're asking you who to ask, and you said the building department. We put it in writing, we gave it to them, they didn't answer.
Nobody said the building department, but we.
No, you said director, you said send an email.
We're talking about a potential resolution of the problem, and there was a proposal made.
The proposal made was all on us, to install a French drain on our property. I would have not gone through all of this if that was, I could have easily said that from day one. The question is, is he in violation of the ordinances?
Mr. Chairman, this is not going to end up getting you anywhere in terms of the discussion. It's obvious that Mr. and Mrs. Sefaldi have a particular position with respect to this. This position is not necessarily the position that's taken by their neighbor. As a matter of fact, it's inconsistent with the position that's taken by their neighbor. They've come to this body, this body has directed me to end up looking into their questions, and therefore, we have ended up choosing this process. In the future, my suggestion would probably be to simply rely on the administration with respect to these issues, and not to end up having these issues escalate in this particular fashion, because this body is not geared to normally addressing these issues in this fashion. That's not to say that residents shouldn't end up saying something, it's just that now this issue has ended up getting larger, and there's always the possibility that the Sefaldis themselves are looking to make a claim against. themselves are looking to make a claim against the city. So, that ends up complicating things even more. So if people are paying attention to this, who are watching this on TV, they need to understand that there is a great deal of complexity with regard to this matter, and that is why we need to proceed in this fashion.
Thank you.
So that's why our questions aren't gonna be answered.
Thank you. Anyone else come up to the podium, state your name and your address?
I did answer a few questions, but I don't find out. I can't believe that lightning didn't strike tonight, because Councilwoman Horvath and I actually agreed on something.
I resent that remark.
State your name and the street you live on, please.
Deb Brown England. I live on Silver Lake. The past two council meetings and study sessions here have been like a circus. This body needs to remember that the residents of the city have elected you to get a job done for us and not act like children. The way that the clerk was treated by the mayor and a member of this council was ridiculous and childish, and I believe at the last session. I've seen five-year-olds that act more civil towards one another. When the clerk asked for a simple form to be filled out to streamline things, the mayor, literally, full of desire, said, "I'm not gonna do it, absolutely." He couldn't even finish the sentence, and I guess that's what's wrong with our city. There's no willingness to listen to someone else's ideas. Most of you have your own agenda and won't listen to others who have good ideas. This is in addition to the yelling match that a councilperson got into with the clerk, which I think both of you owe the clerk an apology. At least he apologized.
If you have a concern or question about...
I do, I do have another concern, this is my second concern.
Comment on the, the, what happened at past meetings?
Well, yeah, because this is the meeting now that I can actually speak about it, because some meetings were not allowed to talk to. The one study session, you did not allow us to speak until after, in fact, it was that study session, actually. You did not allow public comment, because you didn't want things to escalate. The second one is, on the very first meeting in January, I asked if we had received any type of contract from the city of Dearborn in regards to the 911 contract, and you all sat here, the mayor said no, and you all didn't say anything. This is an email from the mayor to you, all of you, on January 4th, that says he does have the draft version of that contract or that proposal from the city of Dearborn for the 911 consolidation, and nobody spoke up and said anything. You all received this email, and that was several weeks before I even came to a meeting. All of you received this, and I guess it's very disheartening to think that none of you spoke up and told the truth, that there was a draft version of this. I even FOIA'd this draft, and I got a letter back saying, "It doesn't exist." So what is it? Who's lying to me? It says, "On December 28th, Mr. Gary Miakki received a draft version of the proposed intergovernmental agreement between the city of Dearborn Heights and the city of Dearborn regarding consolidated dispatch services. I received the email regarding the same late in the day Tuesday, January 2nd, 2017, and I am reviewing it now. I promised the city council I would let them know when I received the proposal from the city of Dearborn. The proposal is being sent to both the fire and police chiefs. Please give the administration opportunity to review the proposal once this is completed and we afford a copy to all city council members." All that needed to be said is, yes, we received the draft, and it's under review, you can't FOIA a contract. That's all that needed to be said. But nobody told the truth. Very disappointing, and all of you.
Anyone else come up to the podium, state your name and the, the street you live on?
Motion to adjourn.
Support. Need adjourn. Thank you, everyone.